We'll go ahead and call the October 20, 2009 meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. First item on the agenda is the presentation of the 2009 Landscaping Awards. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dean Andrew. I'm Planning Director for the city, and for the past several years, the Planning Commission and the Tree Advisory Board have gotten together to try to promote and recognize landscaping projects that have added to the appearance of the city and contributed to everybody's enjoyment by having something attractive in their neighborhood. And this is a joint venture of the Planning Commission, the Tree Advisory Board. You can see all the planning commissioners and their nameplates there, but I did want to mention that the members of the Tree Advisory Board are Kathleen Pearson, Edward French, Amy Weens, Lloyd Davidson, Garrett Morris, the Chair, who's here with us, John Wahols, and Steve Blue, the City Forester, is the staff liaison. For those of you who don't recognize him, he's the guy all dressed up right here. So what we do, and we have selected October generally as the month for that because it's the time of year really in Salina that's the best time for planting, particularly finishing out landscaping or replacing something that needs to be replaced. So these awards have been done annually in October. I guess the first item we'd want to have, John, is the Tree Advisory Board Golden Leaf Award. And this is a special award that's selected each year by the Tree Advisory Board of what they think represents the most significant project for that year. And the project they've selected is the Redeemer Lutheran Church, which is at 743 East Magnolia Road. And the parties involved in that were Donnie Mars, the architect, who gave us the site layout design, set aside areas that could be appropriately landscaped. Bob Brown was involved in the landscape design, and then Mark Weiss was involved in the final stages of installation. This church actually dates back to 1966 in this location. There was an addition done in 1981. There was a very major sanctuary addition here, which you see in the photo, and then an interior remodel of the sanctuary space. And then we also had expansion of a parking lot. What is significant about this, I think, is what an attractive face it presents to Magnolia Road. One of the things that is unique about this site is it is in the Hundred Year Flood Plain, and because of that, the site had to be elevated to stay above the flood elevation. So it does make it rise above Magnolia Road quite a bit, but the landscaping and the work that was done really helps it blend in elevation-wise. And the other thing that's notable is they went over and above the minimum required landscaping as far as area and also tree units. And we'll see how it worked out for required landscaping. The city has a recommended tree list of varieties that have not subject to damage from pests and can survive our environment. They selected some trees like aspens and some other trees that are unusual for this area, but those were over and above the minimum. And so I think you can see from the pictures there that both from a building, site, and landscaping project, this really all fits together. So if we have a representative here from Redeemer Lutheran Church, or congregation, or staff, we'd like to have Steve present you with an award. You just gotta stand up and jump in there. Thank you. I also have plaques in recognition of the other parties involved, and that would be Don Mars. I think we have DMA Architects, and Don did all the initial site preparation and the design, and it turned out very nicely. Thanks, Don. And we want to recognize Bob Brown, who's involved in the initial landscape design. Do you know if Mark Weiss is here? Okay. I didn't know if Mark Weiss was here or not, but we also have -- what? Okay. So Mark was a volunteer on the project and really helped finish it off. So we appreciate everybody involved in Redeemer Lutheran Project, making it turn out the way it did. There's one thing that we did, that we worked with that was a little bit creative here and worked out well for the church and all parties involved, is generally we would tie the occupancy of an addition like this to completion of the landscaping. And what occurred here, and what we agreed to do, is that in 2008, they were moving forward with remodeling some of their existing space, so we pushed the requirement to finish the landscaping onto that permit. And so it was in 2008 when all of that was finalized, but that allowed them to occupy and use their sanctuary and then finalize all the things on the site. And I think we'd all agree that it turned out very well. Our second project that we want to give recognition to is Riverside Plaza, and that is at 600 East Elm, to the east of downtown. Riverside Plaza LLC, a group of local investors were the owners. Flat and Associates Architects, which is actually out of Madison, Wisconsin, was involved in some of the original design. And then Wallace Landscaping, a local contractor, was involved. And that, the chronology on that was in, we had what was essentially a vacant lot in a somewhat deteriorated condition. And in 2000, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a conditional use permit for a 24-unit apartment complex here for the elderly, and consists of both one- and two-bedroom units, and their philosophy is to provide a continuum of care for residents. And so as things went along, they originally didn't have an idea for carports, and so they added carports. They also originally underestimated the number of residents they would have who would keep their cars, so we did a modification there and came up with some other areas to come up with additional parking, because their estimates of the percentage of their residents who would still drive and maintain their cars was less than anticipated. So they designed the site for flexibility, and there's actually a plan, if conditions allow, where they would build a twin building directly to the east of this that would face on Elm and would be interconnected by an elevated walkway. So we do want to recognize those principals involved. They put a vacant lot that wasn't particularly attractive into productive use. It's very compatible with the comm care facility across the street, and the front yard landscaping that they did in 2003 has been well-maintained through the years, and they managed to hang on to that tree in the front yard and get the sidewalk around it. So if there's a representative here of Riverside Plaza, we'd like to present a plaque to them. We had some conversations, and said the property manager might be present. So you helped take care of that, huh? Okay. So we have the property manager and two volunteers who helped take care of things. I didn't know if Mike Wallace or somebody representing Wallace Landscaping is here. We want to recognize Wallace Landscaping as well. Third project we have destined is the Salinas Surgical Arts Center, and this is not to be confused with the Salinas Surgical Center, which is there at the corner of South and Fifth and Santa Fe. But Surgical Arts Center is in what was the former Firestone Building, then the General Air Building, and now Salinas Surgical Arts. And Dr. David Hendricks was the purchaser of that property, and it converted that into Surgical Arts Center. Jones Gillum Rins was involved in the original design and the renovations to the property. Dr. Hendrick and his wife were the actual designers of the landscape plantings and everything, and Dan Audi with PSI was involved in the installation of landscape and particularly the irrigation. So we want to recognize all those parties, and it's a little bit of a challenge for two reasons. It's in the downtown area, where everything tends to be paved. You've got that nice canopy there that provides a lot of shade, and so they picked varieties that would be shade tolerant. And you have to admit, if you had before and after pictures of having the concrete slab there versus what it looks like today, and the entrance that it provides off of Walnut there, it is very attractive and well-done. So, and again, in the downtown district, any landscaping that is done is voluntary. So we want to recognize Dr. Hendrick and his wife, first of all, both as owners and as selectors of the plantings and the final design. So Steve, if you have a plaque for them. So if you want to come forward. Charles, we'll let you receive on behalf of Jones Gillum Rins, and they were the architects that assisted with that project. And then Dan Audi with PSI was involved in setting up the irrigation system there. So again, we want to thank all the parties that have really made a nice redevelopment downtown, and even nicer by the fact that they voluntarily added that landscape. Our fourth project is what we're calling the category of zero-scaping. And about, for the past two years, I know that we've worked with the Planning Commission. We've had people in here from the Arboretum in Heston. We have talked about water conservation, and we were asked to look at our landscape ordinance to see if we were requiring people to use plantings or design plantings that consumed too much water. And so what was done was our landscape ordinance was modified, and it was set up to try to encourage zero-scaping, which would be an emphasis on having less irrigated cool-seasoned grasses and trees that don't, that need lots of water, and putting an emphasis on plants, bushes, grasses like buffalo grass and Bermuda that don't require large amounts of water to stay alive. This particular property's on East Iron, at the corner of Wisconsin and Iron. If you have a memory, the old Adamson House was there. It wasn't always in great repair, and it was demolished in 1997. The property sat vacant until 2007, when Doctors Driver and Clark purchased the property and with the idea of constructing a new optometrist office and clinic in that location, and they began construction in the fall of 2007. They occupied the project in 2008. And so we had a site plan that was prepared by Jones Gillum Rins, and they laid out parking and building and all of that. And then one thing that makes this notable is Dr. Driver himself went and did a lot of research. He wanted to research zero-scaping, zero-scaping plants and principles, and he basically worked with staff to design his own zero-scaping planting plan. And then with the help of Wallace Landscaping, that was carried out in the field. But some of the things they did was they stayed away from large areas of cool-seasoned grasses like fescue, using Bermuda. They used a lot of mulched areas with plantings, and the plant varieties were drought-tolerant. So you can see the use of rocks and mulches. And so the idea being that you don't need a lot of artificial sources of water to keep these areas alive. So this is what we think is a good demonstration of applying zero-scaping principles to a new development project. So we want to recognize, first of all, Dr. Driver and Stacy Clark for the, as owners and as active designers in the final product. So I'm not sure, I talked to Dr. Driver earlier whether he was going to be here. He was trying to reschedule patients, and he also has a clinic in Minneapolis. But he was very excited to have his project recognized and badly wanted to be here, but had a number of patients booked for this time slot. I guess our other categories would be Jones Gillum Rins then for, as project architects, and again, Wallace Landscaping for the final installation and the final product that we see there today. So Mike Wallace. And our final project is what we call the Parking Lot Landscape Buffer Project. And the City of Salina, in addition to having landscape requirements that apply to building sites, even a standalone parking lot that's constructed new has some buffering requirements. And this is a piece of property where we had some existing homes. They were purchased by the church, which was very short of accessible parking. The homes were demolished. The church may have set a record for most appearances at boards, because they are in the Heritage Commission jurisdiction. They were inside the Downtown Design Review Board area. They also appeared before the Planning Commission with their plans for the parking lot. They also had a project, Dustin, I don't know what our photographs show, but part of their project, you can see projecting out from the building there is a porticoche or shelter, and that projects over a alley. And the alley is a public alley and needed to stay a public alley, so they also had to work with the City Commission on getting approval of that to be constructed over the alley and still provide access for fire apparatus and trash trucks and other things that needed to traverse the alley. So there were a lot of things there, but I think what is notable is that this sets a very good example for others. If you wanted to point to examples of, say, what do you mean by buffering a parking lot from public streets? This is a very good example of that. It very much complements the church and the President's Place project across the street. And they also were able to retain and save a couple of large mature trees that provide shade and add to the attractiveness. So with that, we would like to particularly recognize Rita Charleston with Valley Gardens in Linsburg. She helped design the landscape plan. And so the real person steering that on behalf of the St. John's Lutheran Church was Don Vansel, and so we want to recognize him as a representative of the congregation that helped steer that through. Is it Jones Gillum and Rita Charleston? Okay. Thanks, Don. And we want to recognize Jones Gillum Rins as architects. Charles is getting tired, but. And then Rita Charleston with Valley Gardens in Linsburg, who helped design that and worked with members of the congregation to get the plantings installed. So a lot of times, these church projects, a lot of the work is done by volunteers, and it usually turns out very well. So we want to thank Steve Blue, our City Forester, who gives people lots of good advice about landscape and landscape projects, and his work with the Tree Advisory Board. And we want to congratulate everybody who's helped contribute to the built environment here in Salina. Go to our regular meeting.
Oh, you can hang out as long as you want. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Okay, we'll move to item number two on the agenda. Approval of the summary minutes from the regular meeting held October 6, 2009.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 6, 2009 meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries. Item number three, application PDD 09-2/2A filed by Jones Gillum Rins on behalf of Salina Community Theater, St. Francis Academy, and the City of Salina, requesting a change in zoning, district classification from C3 Shopping Center District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District to PDD Plan Development District to create an expanded campus for the Salina Community Theater. The subject property is legal description on your packets there.
Sure you don't want to read it all?
I'm sure.
We're going to try to shorten it here through the replat process and make that simpler. But John, if you could go to the vicinity map here, just to make sure that we are all We had an open public hearing at the last meeting. We heard from the resident who was over here that was, their primary concern was access coming in this location. And we presented our case that the Community Theater went over and purchased that property, at least partly at city staff's urging, because we thought that was important. The alternative is that you have this platted alley here that comes out next to buildings that sit practically at the street, and that is a very undesirable situation, both for having people exit the parking lot through that alley and visibility. So having this parking lot be able to disperse here and provide emergency access, alternative routing for trucks that might be making deliveries or having materials, we think is an improvement. One thing that was lacking at the time, and I wish I could get my highlighter out and draw on it here, but I will explain the one item that was finalized here with action of the St. Francis Board. If you look at this line right here, that is today the property line between what St. Francis Academy owns and the Community Theater. And what they agreed to do was to take that and move it here. So we are getting this roadway here primarily on the property that would be under the ownership and control of Salina Community Theater, having the access and drop-off there, clearly not having any portion of the building on that. That was important for two reasons. It put those improvements there. It also allowed us to work with the surveyor and with the architect to say, all right, what is the parcel that goes with the Community Theater? What is the parcel that goes with St. Francis Academy? So John and Mike, I might have you jump to the supplemental staff report, and I'll just kind of walk through that. The way that this is set up, you saw the lengthy legal description that Patrick didn't really want to read, and we didn't want to make sure we had everything covered there. The idea behind replating this is that you would have a single platted lot, Lot 2, that would comprise the Salina Community Theater and its improvements, and that contains just a little less than an acre. And so with the theater addition, the building size would increase to 20,200 square feet, which is about 48 percent of that lot. And so one of the things that we were, our goals was, we realized that this was a very unique project. It didn't really fit neatly in any zoning, classification, or category, so having a Plan Development District and customizing the zoning, we felt it was important to itemize for you the areas that didn't comply with standard zoning. This is one of them. The lot coverage is slightly higher than what would be allowed if you maintained the straight C3 zoning. The theater addition entrance, I think you saw, will be oriented to face east towards that north-south access drive. The height of the building with the addition is 32 feet at the peak, and the C3 maximum is 35, so that fits. As far as building setbacks, the building addition is 21 feet from Iron Avenue, which is slightly less than the 25 feet required in C3. As far as parking, we had some discussion there. Mr. Spicer indicated that the Black Box Theater, the new theater, is not going to be used for performances at the same time as the existing theater. So even though we're obligated to look at the capacity combined, we think the situation's really more comparable to downtown, where if you're attending the Stiefel Theater, you might park on the street, you might park in a public lot and walk. And so we've documented that the parking here is less than what would be required if you were building in a greenfield-type site, in whether it was performing arts or movie theater or other type of theater as far as the ratio of parking spaces to seating. Might let Charles clarify if there's something that we didn't catch. As far as we could tell, the plan was to maintain some form or similar form of the pylon sign that's out along Iron Avenue, but it wasn't clear from what we reviewed whether any additional signage is proposed. That would need to be clarified. We had some discussion. John, if you could go to number two, the proposed site plan. We had some discussion here that essentially this is going to be a concrete plaza area here, and we'll have the public sidewalk portion here on the right-of-way. And then they want to work with the engineering department to cut the curb and have a sidewalk bus drop-off area there. And so the plan is that this area between the building and street would be a concrete plaza area, bearing in mind that this is all public parkland here and is green space around that side. And then what Charles identified is there are areas here, here, that would be unpaved and left in a vegetated state of some kind, where grass would be planted, and then there's possibility of doing something in here. But again, I don't think we would want trees necessarily out in that area to, that might obstruct visibility in those locations. As far as the parking lot, we talked about in our award session, parking lot buffers and landscaping. And what you have here, these things are existing islands that are there that are kind of in a cookie cutter pattern in the parking lot. Those would be eliminated to allow for the 90-degree parking. And then you'd have an area right here that's kind of a linear island there, and that would stay in place, and that does provide a And that does provide an area for supplemental tree plantings. Could also be used for parking lot light poles and strong possibility of a fire hydrant in this location to cover back of the building there from a fire protection standpoint. Really need to pin down the exact, but you do have a situation where here, portion of these stalls and these spaces here are actually going to be located on, still on St. Francis Academy property. And so, this will, what we'll work with them on is having cross-access easements here that guarantee the public, patrons of the theater, Mrs. Hopley, who has a garage right here, and St. Francis Academy, that has those spaces there to make sure that there is, access rights are guaranteed and dispel out maintenance responsibility for this roadway here. Then we have up here, the two-and-a-half lots that were purchased by the community theater, and they allow secondary access and egress in and out of that parking lot. John, if you could go back to the supplemental staff report and to the standards for development So, the standards that we as a staff and you as a commission should look at for improving a development plan should be that the development will not injure, damage, the use, value, enjoyment of surrounding property, that it will be safely accessible from public roads, and that driveways will be adequate to serve the residents, occupants, or users, that it will not impose an undue burden on public services. We are in a situation here where this tract is not under single ownership, it's under mixed ownership. And so, we've tried to construct a partnership here between St. Francis Academy, the City of Salina, and the community theater to make all this work. If you could go to the next page, John. We don't specifically have any structures or uses planned right now. That about's a residential district. Depending on what happens with the lots on Second Street, we would look at that at that time. But if you could go to the recommendation, John. What, item A there addresses is what would be considered Founder's Park, the parking lot to the north, and accessory storage building. Lot 2 is that designation for the community theater itself and the lot that's carved out there. The Lot 3 would be for the St. Francis Academy, and that consists of administrative offices and a residential dwelling that's on the second floor there. So, we've tried to address that. And then the thing that we probably ought to clarify at this meeting and have a meeting of the minds on is just what the anticipated uses are on Lot 4, which is up in the corner there along Second Street. I guess what we were recommending is that what could be permitted there would be any use that's permitted in an R1 district, which means that if they wanted to build a cottage there for visiting performing artists or some other form of housing there, that would be permitted. If they wanted to build a public parking lot there, that would be permitted. But the next subitem, Subitem 2, says that whatever, whether it's a building or development of parking lots or whatever, that would come back to you for review of that plan for use of the Second Street property. And that would also give any neighboring residents on Second Street an opportunity to see what was actually planned there at that time. Item 3 there is making sure that the looped public waterline connection between Iron Avenue and Second Street gets installed and is operational, and that we get the easements needed for that on the replat of the property. Then Item 4 there summarizes the waivers or variations that we have identified, first one being that the community theater addition would be 21 feet with a setback from iron. The St. Francis Academy building actually sits at a zero setback. And our reason for calling that out is that the way it sits there today, it's a non-conforming structure. So, if it had a fire or something that damaged it more than 50 percent, it couldn't be built back that way. By incorporating that zero setback into this plan development district, if something were to happen to that building from a damage standpoint or whatever, that would allow that to be built back just as it is in its present location. Item C there authorizes them to exceed the 40 percent lot coverage. Item D there is a waiver of the front yard landscaping requirement along iron to allow for an extended sidewalk and bus drop-off area. And again, the, Charles can speak to the plan for that plaza there. And then Item E there documents, would document your approval of the 87 spaces that are proposed on the plan. And Item 5 there indicates that they would need to complete and finalize a replat of this property prior to the zoning change or the plan development district taking effect. So, we believe that now knowing where the line is between the community theater and St. Francis Academy, that allowed us to complete all of our zoning-related reviews and package those up and get that in front of you today for possible action. So, with that, I would be happy to address anything that you don't feel that has been addressed in our staff report, discuss any of the conditions or requested modifications. But to us from a staff standpoint, the main things, and we'll get to it in the plat, would be deciding the boundary between Lots 1 and 4, whether the parking lot to the north should be joined with the lots on Second or with Founder's Park. And then, if there's any other thoughts from Michael or Charles about anticipated uses of the lots on Second Street that maybe we didn't think about, then we could hear from them on that. But at this point, I'd be open to any questions about what we might have left out of our report or the requested modifications that they have.
Any questions with staff?
I know that I particularly talked about the waiver and the landscaping. There is some minimal area of greenery, correct?
Correct.
John, if you could go back to the Item 2 site plan?
And I don't...
But you haven't calculated in percentage of waiver?
Well, some of it is.
We're viewing it as a somewhat of a complete waiver because the, essentially what's defined as the front yard area here, this is actually out in the right-of-way. This is in the right-of-way, and this is over in the corner here. But looking at it, the frontage between the building and the street is basically all a plaza area.
And John, do you have an elevation from the south view?
So, this is a nighttime view, but what you have then, you've got Founder's Park and the river over here. This looks a little bit like a tree there, Charles, but maybe you can speak to that. And this is out in the right-of-way. But it seemed to us that about the best you could do would be to have some planter boxes or something of that nature, as opposed to trying to carve out spaces for trees or things like that. We certainly wouldn't want any trees out here because we want to maintain sightlines and visibilities. But I can't, this could very well be on the Founder's Park side of the line. I guess what I was looking at also in the parking lot to the north, the city owns that parking lot, so it's really somewhat under our control as far as what gets put there in the way of landscaping. So, I guess we might ask Charles what's been thought about in the way and the thinking there on that plaza. I think the landscaping regulations actually do speak to things like fountains, sculptures, things like that, that you can have in a front yard area that can be credited as ornamental landscape that's not living material. But I'll let Charles speak to whether this is really a tree or not, or if this is actually around the base of the building, and speak to what the view is of that plaza. But we were looking at that as mostly from a tree unit standpoint, that no additional tree plantings were proposed between the frontage of the building and Iron Avenue, which is more of a downtown-type setting than a suburban-type setting.
Go ahead, Mr. Rens.
Yeah, on a couple of things that Dean had mentioned. The first thing he mentioned was in regard to the signage, the existing signage that's there. It's intended that that sign will stay down the road. That may change, but for now, it is our intent to leave that sign, and we are not intending on adding any additional signage. As far as the landscaping...
In terms of this elevation here, where I assume the sign has to be relocated in some way, or will it stay right where it is?
No, the sign stays where it is. It's actually just beyond that secondary entry, about where you see the, I guess, the furthest little bollard light to the left.
Actually, it would sit about right here.
Yeah. It's actually just west of that last light. The landscaping, the one other area that is shown on the plan for some green space is...
I'm pointing to the... This little area right here, where you see this hatch. This is a new piece of sidewalk. This is green space right here as it exists today. There's a tall CMU, fluted CMU block wall that sits in this area right here. There are some existing plantings in that area right there. We did leave that area for plantings around the entry and in front of the large CMU wall. I did not point that out last time that we talked.
Dean also mentioned in regard to the, you know, the use of sculpture around the building. Our intent with this project was looking at this more, a little bit more of an urban scale, being close to the downtown environment and with its use. We really tried to let the face of the building be somewhat of a sculpture in itself, you know, with the sculptured wall material, the fluted CMU wall, the contrasting wall panels, and then the proposed lighting schemes along there. So, again, we do have decorative bollards, light bollards that go out in front of the building, again, trying to be consistent with the style of the architecture for the Also, we have discussed the possibility of some planters and that type of thing in the future, but they would be a lot smaller scale. We've discussed that possibility, but we really haven't committed ourselves to that. If we were to do that, it would be something more in keeping with the style of the building. But at this time, we're not committed to anything like that.
Personally, I could see something like that and would encourage something like that. I mean, we just gave away awards for great landscaping. Hard not to think of that and the impact that it has on a building and the total concept of what people see when they come to Salina. And I'll point out this very nicely done building at 200 South Fifth Street, the Dr. Hendrick's Salina Surgical Arts Center. I don't know who the architect was on that, but I just... Mine knows you. But again, there's some nice low plantings there. They're kind of almost modernistic in scope, and I don't think stuff has to be big or take away from your building in any way. Just, I like the effect that landscape has and softens things. And certainly with the rest of the landscaping close to the river there would blend in with that very well. But it's my opinion.
We do try to be sensitive to that, again, and we look at it again on a project-by-project basis as well. And we do want to be sensitive to that. Like I said, with planners and things may be considered down the road, but with the scale of the project and, you know, more the urban environment that we're trying to get with here, that we have elected not to do that at this point. But I do appreciate your comment and understand.
Yeah, I don't agree with them. I still stand by my point that I think that the building itself is the landscape, is the architecture. I think throwing planners and stuff out front, to quote the famous movie film in Salina King, just looked like a turd in a punch bowl. I think you try and throw a bunch of stuff out there that doesn't fit, and I think it's ridiculous. It looks like a wart on the building. I think the building looks fine. I think trying to add green space to it, for one, is going to block a great sight view. I mean, this is going to open up the ability for traffic to flow out of here, great. We start throwing up little planners and things and interfering with the line of sight, then we're right back to where we started, and that is vehicles are moving out of there at a slow pace. I mean, I appreciate landscaping like anybody else, but let's do it where we need to do it. Let's not just throw it on every project that comes along and mess up a brilliant design here with that. I think with that Founder's Park back there, you guys have, like I said, I know it's not your land, so to speak, but it looks very green as it is. This building, we just can't keep pushing these ideals off on everything that comes down the pike here for us to say, "Put a tree here." That'd be great, you know, I just think you've got a great design there, and I would be on the record of saying, "I don't think you need anything out front."
Could you address the tree that Dean was talking about in the conceptual picture there? Is that a tree, or is that not a tree?
Right there. Oh, right there? That tree actually was, looked at, my, we have kind of a dead corner right there, if you will, the way that the big wall goes through the building right there. It's kind of a 45-degree corner. The conceptual idea behind that was that was like an interior, an interior tree. And again, as I've said before, you know, it'd be a, you know, obviously not a real tree, but that it would be...
Green.
Green, yeah. And our goal was to, you know, through the use of the storefront material, the curtain wall material right there, we wanted to see the natural material, the contrast between the hard concrete, fluted CMU walls that are, you know, part of the existing style of the building. We wanted to continue that around. That does continue inside the building, yet we wanted to contrast that with softer, more natural materials. So, we've got a lot of wood panel that goes on the inside of the building, wood trim, and again, just the activity inside the building to kind of soften the building as well. I want to use that to soften the appearance of the building.
I applaud the design of it, and the scope of it is great. And Commissioner Householder and I, as we both pointed out, these are our personal opinions, but what we as a commission have to do is we have to weigh the plans that you submit against what our comprehensive plan says. And of course, that says that buildings, at a minimum, all facilities should be in good repair and be located on attractively landscaped sites. So, what we have to do is we have to weigh, you know, of course, that with this. And personally, this is not a deal-breaker for me at all, but more a suggestion of something that I would like to see in personal taste.
I understand. Thanks.
I guess the way we were looking at this was more in the category of the Dr. Hendrick project, that what he did there was his voluntary decision of where it fit in best, but it was not required. And I think that, you know, sometimes the concept that you say, well, you're granting a waiver, I think the idea is that we as a staff certainly would encourage and have encouraged Charles to look for areas there where something could be done, but it would be done more on a voluntary basis, how best fit, rather than trying to prescribe that. And so, I said, the waiver sounds like... And so, I said, the waiver sounds like you're completely ignoring the subject, but we are in kind of agreement with Charles that this, you know, but for the river and some other things, this could be considered a downtown theater, and it's more of the urban setting. And we've got the St. Francis Building with a zero setback right next to it. So, I guess our reasoning on that was to leave it to Charles and the Theater and Theater Board to decide what incremental things they might want to do, but not prescribe what and where as far as those areas. And so, I think if you look at the elevations there of the building and how the front would look, it really flows and everything fits together well there from the paths into the building, to the drop-off, to the attractiveness of the building itself. So, I think we get a little bit hung up on the fact that it's waiver, but I don't think anybody's ignoring, just by having the discussion, you're not ignoring that. But, you know, that those, when, sometimes when the owners or board members get a hold of the site, you know, there are modifications made, and that was, again, that was Dr. Hendrick's voluntary decision, that that's the way he wanted the front of his building to be presented. And so, that's kind of the way we left it here.
I agree that this whole project doesn't fit a cookie cutter downtown project or a C-3 project. It's kind of a mix of both in terms of the parking issues, landscaping setbacks. There's a lot of issues like that. But overall, I think it's a great plan, and I think it'll be a great asset to the community.
I think the only other question that we had for Charles or Michael was whether we had not anticipated, some anticipated use of the lots on Second Street. I guess we primarily saw those as possible supplemental parking down the road and perhaps a place where some form of a residence or cottage or something could be built. But if there's something that we are missing there, then we want to try to address that or allow for that now, so.
I think that the initial thought was that the Egress Road was the most important factor currently. And neither in the budget that we currently are striving to achieve nor in future plans had we thought about exactly what we might do with it. I think the ideal use for us at some point is to create a cottage, an artist's cottage that could be used for either theater interns in the summer or visiting artists from other cultural organizations throughout the year. At some point, when Mr. Webb owned the property, we would love to have achieved that house and renovated the house, but because it deteriorated so badly after the fire, that became a moot point. But again, ideally, as we move forward, we would like at least the southern part of that property to, again, return to some kind of functional artist residence, and that the northern part could conceivably become extra parking for the community theater or for that house. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Yeah, we tried to address that in our items relating to number four that said that any use permitted in the R1, single-family residential or public parking would be permitted on that lot in the future, not knowing, not having specific plans for it now. And certainly, the R1 would allow for a cottage or some visitors' residence at a future time.
Any further questions? Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Any further discussion on this item? You appear to be ready to make a motion.
I move approval of application PDD-09-2/2A, including the five staff recommendations.
Can I hold that up for just one second? This is a public hearing, so is there any member of the audience that wants to comment otherwise on this? None being seen, I'm sorry. It's for the formality.
She's done with, I'll second that if you're finished with that, yeah, yeah.
Moved in second to approve application PDD-09-2/2A with the items listed by the staff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. All right. Application P09-7/7A filed by Jones, Gill and Marans on behalf of the Salina Community Theater, St. Francis Academy and the City of Salina, requesting approval of a replat portion of the original town of Salina in order to create platted lots for the Salina Community Theater facility, Founder's Park, St. Francis Academy and shared parking facilities, and to define the boundaries of the old Smoky Hill River Channel. The subject property is located on the north side of East Iron Avenue between the old Smoky Hill River Channel and North Second Street, continued from the October 6, 2009 meeting.
Yeah, I think I will, I think I understand what some of these drawings are, but John, in the PDFs, the SCT area ownership map, if you could maybe call that up? And that would be a place to start. It's a drawing that we wanted to have at the last meeting, and it's been kind of our building block here. And it's nice and colorful and somewhat confusing, but Mr. Meisel didn't enjoy trying to read the legal description for this property, and we haven't enjoyed trying to track it all down because there have been multiple deeds here. There were, there were actually exchanges of property where the community theater was owned by the community theater, and then it was owned by the city, and then it's back owned by the community theater again, but in different pieces. There was Founder's Park, and particularly the mill and the mill area here. This area here was deeded to the city by Western Star Mill. This is actually both right-of-way for Fourth Street and a river, which is hard to be both. But what this is essentially, a lot of these descriptions in here are based on the high bank of the river. And so, what we've tried to depict here is this is the high bank of the river. What the goal is here is to take this area and have that clarified that this is river channel and recreational trail right-of-way. And in our connectivity discussions, Dan will be talking with you a little bit about a conceptual plan for future trails. But by designating this as drainage and recreational trail right-of-way, you have the ability either here or on this side to use some of the riverbank area for future trails. It clarifies that it's under public control and ownership. We have two little things that we're ironing out here. One, this property's right here. The last known ownership was in 1873, and there's no record of a tax sale or delinquent taxes or public ownership. We would like to claim it, so we're working with the city attorney to see how we can establish our claim for that. Then we have this lot right here that a gentleman bought at tax sale and pays his $4 taxes a year to visit it three times a year from Olathe. And we would like to either buy him out or get control of that because any type of bike trailer path would go through there as well. So, what this box represents is the Salina Community Theater addition campus. And then this lot here is Founder's Park. You got the parking lot, you have this area inside this box on Second Street. And then this represents, this little box here is what the St. Francis Academy has agreed to deed over to the community theater, make part of their lot, so their lot would come down like so. And then this L-shaped lot is St. Francis. So, this is somewhat of an exercise of a jigsaw puzzle. The only thing that, and we would, I mean, the city has some say, the planning commission may have some opinions. The, our inclination would be to call this the city lot, and even though this is the park portion and this is the parking lot portion, would be to make this all part of Lot 1 and have this piece over here stand in as its own as Lot 4. The way the surveyors drew it up, John, I think the other PDF is the final plat that was done by Landmark Surveying. And it may, I don't, nobody was being, doing anything, but what they could do, it was all dictated by what the decision was of the St. Francis Academy Board and what was going to be added or subtracted. These lines are kind of faint, but this plat shows Lot 4 is coming over and encompassing the city lot, and we would be inclined to make Lot 4 here and make this part of Founder's Park. And so, this turned out rather faint. The other item of interest, which is very hard to see, is you have a 25-foot easement that runs right through here that has some higher voltage West Star power lines in there. There was some discussion, we've had discussions with the community theater and with West Star, but it would take a pretty large sum of money to buy West Star out of that location or get them to relocate. So, you more or less have to leave them there and work around them. So, then we have an alignment for water line easement here. And I think we will get the definitive staff position from Utilities Director and Engineering, but I think that, John, if you go to Slide 13, the site modifications, and I think from maybe Mr. Rens's point of view and the engineer working on their behalf, their idea was to keep this water line out of the future paving or paving of this road. And actually, from a staff perspective, we would rather see the utility easement in line follow this path because we know it'll always be open and come down in an alignment like this with a possible future fire hydrant right here. Our concern about this is that we've got a building sitting right here, and this line is like two feet from the wall of that building, and we think it's too close. So, we would like to work with Mr. Rens and his engineer, Mr. Parrish, about finalizing that location. But we think that getting everybody's opinion on whether this piece here should go with this lot or whether this is more appropriately joined with Founder's Park, and this is the city's parcel, that would also reflect the fact that this is owned by the community theater and this is all owned by the city, and keep that as one. But our inclination would be to get people's feedback on whether the parking lot should be part of Founder's Park city lot or part of Lot 4, and then finalizing the alignment of that utility easement and making sure that it's 20 feet in width. I think the surveyors inadvertently showed it at 10 on their plat. But the other items, the clarifying title to the two lots and the channel and working with Mr. Hauserman are not under the applicant's control. That's the city's responsibility. So, our points would be to clarify the boundary between Lots 1 and 4, finalize the alignment of the utility easement, make sure it's 20 feet, and then working with St. Francis Academy and confirming and clarifying the right to construct improvements on their property and long-term ownership and maintenance of those improvements. And that can be done through notes on the plat and other items. But we will show basically this as an access easement, which means it's available for public use or anybody's use, but we'd want to maybe be more specific about these spaces are actually on the community theater's property. These spaces are on St. Francis property, and this is Mrs. Hopley's garage here. So, we would want to clarify, and St. Francis would probably want to clarify their rights to drive across there to access their property. But those can be done as separate notes. So, if you are comfortable and understanding the concept of having river channel right-of-way for separate lots and the need to define whether the parking lot goes with Founder's Park or the Second Street lots, then we think that having resolved the boundary line between St. Francis and community theater holdings, that we now are not moving anymore, and we've got four lots and a river channel established, and we think that this replat is in order for your consideration today if everybody thinks they've understood those concepts. But again, we've tried to move towards this. We did it on the Lakewood School site. We had that discussion over on North Street with the replat of Plum Orchard. Is to try as much impossible to clarify that the river channel is public-owned and publicly maintained and that that allows for the future to put public uses there, whether it's trails or paths or other things. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions. And I said, our inclination, even though it was drawn up differently, would be to have Founder's Park and all the land the city owns be part of one lot, this be a separate lot, this lot here and this lot here. And so, that's the way we would direct Landmark Surveying to finalize that unless either the applicants or commission members think that the parking lot should be joined with Second Street. But I'd be open to any questions about the plat. It's really, I said, it's really been more of a jigsaw puzzle exercise than anything else, but there's, we think the replat will really help clarify who has what and make the descriptions much easier. It's much easier to have a lot in a replat than to have all those pieces.
I'll just say, I think the park and the parking lot should be joined as one. That makes the most logical sense, I mean, the city property. The only other question I had, if the street, I mean, you're saying that the street, that easement is going to be public access, do we really need to write a right-of-way for...
No, I don't think necessarily unless they feel the need for that just from the standpoint that these spaces, this is basically the property line here. Charles has basically done a design to incorporate these into this larger lot, but they're actually on St. Francis property, and it's really up to them. If they want something specific that specifically grants them access as opposed to public access, we'll do it, but I agree with you that if it's a public access easement, everybody's going to drive on it. I mean, essentially, the, if you're out in the Belmont Plaza area, Belmont Boulevard ends at Planet Avenue there, the Frontage Road, and the road from there west is a public access easement that all these, Goodwill, the motel, all have the ability to use, or anybody for that matter. It's a public access easement, it's just owned privately and not a public street.
And then with the water line up there, I mean, I would agree. I think anytime we can put it where it's, doesn't have, potentially have something else more permanent than a road built over it. Do we know, I mean, just kind of more of a technical question, like what the life expectancy of sort of that water line would be? I mean, is this going to be a real problem if they have to tear up the road later?
Well, the water lines that exist in that area are 100 years old.
Okay, so, kind of a moot point. Okay, so kind of a moot point then, okay. So moving it to the center probably does make the most sense, gets it out of the way, that building and?
Yeah, we've had discussions that direction, but I think it's just, it's easier to install if it's in green space, but if it goes in before the road, then you're just building a road over the top of it. So we will finalize Ms. Tasker's position on that, but the feedback I've been getting is to keep it away from that building and put it under the road, and that way everybody knows where it is.
Yep.
It also keeps it out of the way of any future building.
Any further questions of staff? Does the applicant care to comment?
So.
Any questions for the applicant?
I'd say I think the only two people that have understood the jigsaw puzzles, the city surveyor that helped me put it together and myself, because we went down to the registered deeds office and pulled every single deed on this property that's dating back to the 1860s, so.
Now, if the Hauserman or Minch properties, the easements can't be acquired there, how does that affect your thoughts about what you want to do with the River Channel back there? And I assume they have nothing to do with the community?
Yeah, I've had discussions with Mr. Hauserman, and I think he's open to being approached, it's just that the authority to offer him compensation to buy it is beyond my pay grade and it's beyond the planning commission's pay grade, so that will be decided ultimately by the city commission. If worse comes to worse, you know, we just go around him and leave him out. The ideal thing would be for the city to be able to just acquire that and include it as, because he is, he is not inclined, even though it has minimal value, he's not inclined just to dedicate it over as a River Channel, he would want to be compensated since he went to the trouble of going to a tax sale and buying it. The current appraised value is $310, so it's.
Let's give him double.
He's got access to it off of Second Street there?
Well, he actually doesn't. The street, the street ends way, his lot is actually below, the way to get to his lot is to climb down the riverbank to the side of the river.
Fishing hole, huh?
He, I think he told me he fishes there, visits about three times a year, so.
It's a real estate investment, you know?
But I checked and he's paid his taxes every year for the last five years since he bought it, so.
More than can be said for some.
So I'd say, I think if, the main thing we're doing here is make sure that everybody's in agreement, we've got a city lot, a community theater lot, a St. Francis lot, and then a community theater lot on Second Street, and we are confident that we have now defined the public portion of the River Channel that would have the ability to be used in the future for other uses.
Does everyone understand that? Any further discussion? Ready to make a motion?
Well, I would move that we approve application PO9-7/7A.
I'd second that.
And that would put the parking lot as part of Founder's Park?
As part of Founder's Park.
Okay.
We will make that adjustment.
And motion with adding the parking lot to Founder's Park in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
We really want to thank Michael and Charles for working through with us on all the different site issues. Like I said, it's been a jigsaw puzzle and we put the pieces together, so thank you for your working with us on that.
Thank you all.
Can't wait to see it. Okay, comprehensive plan discussion. This time it's about connectivity, I think you all got something in your packet about that?
What we had was a, there was a study session that was done jointly with city commission. Some members of the planning commission were able to attend and some advisory committee members, and we covered a lot of material. It actually was a steady session that city commission was interested enough to carry it over to a following Monday study session. So what we decided to do was, it seemed certainly not the right thing to do to say, all right, we're going to schedule a public hearing, and the planning commission needs to look at this in its entirety and digest it at one swoop. So what we've done is, our last meeting, we talked about the concepts relating to parks and a community or neighborhood organization, and we wanted to talk today about just the section on connectivity, which used to be what you'd call the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan, but we're taking a broader view of transportation to really be multimodal and look at bus transportation, cycling and walking, as well as the roadways, probably more so than in the past. So, John, if you want to go to the connectivity goals, the next slide, and these are the overall goals presented in the plan. I think the consultant was trying to take credit for already implementing the City Go system, but it is up and running, so if the planning commission wants to take credit for that as an accomplished goal, you can. But we have begun to implement the City Go system. We have sometimes been lacking on bicycle and pedestrian access as far as making it a system or having the connectivity that probably shouldn't be involved. We don't have much control over the rail system, and I think it goes without saying that the airport authority is continuing to try to develop the municipal airport as a regional employment center as well as a transportation hub, and I think it goes without saying that one of the keys to moving forward on any transportation system is identifying sources of funding, leveraging funding, partnering on projects, so that will be important. John, the next one I think talks about bicycle network, and we don't really have anything you could call linear park except for the levee trail from Magnolia up to Bill Burke, and it doesn't branch off much from that. I guess, Dan, you could expand a little bit. We've talked about multi-use paths and then bike lanes on streets. I recall when I moved to Salina, there were green signs up that said Bike Route on various streets like Indiana and Highland and places like that, and in some places a white line along the edge there, kind of designating that as a place for bicycle. I think because of some liability and other concerns and the hit-and-miss nature of bike lanes, every one of those signs was pulled, and we really don't have a system of bike lanes. The people who are serious bikers and commuters, they want to commute on the public street system. I think the people who are more casual riders and families feel more comfortable on multi-use paths. So I might let Dan speak a little bit from an engineering standpoint, the differences between multi-use paths, bike lanes, and then utilizing the shoulder for biking and how that figures into road design. But Dan, isn't the multi-use path like what you'd see on South Ohio with the physically separate path that's not next to or part of the street where it's devoted strictly to bicycles, pedestrians?
Yeah, John, you want to pull that Holmes Road? We have just a sketch showing possible future, basically a median street. The complete street concept is what this comp plan is advocating for. They didn't give us any real details on exactly what that would look like other than a pretty picture of how it could look, but we decided, well, let's take it with our normal 100-foot right-of-way that we get for an example like a Holmes Road or a East Crawford or any of our normal arterials, how would that fit? And so we put a, I don't know if that really, if you can blow that up anymore or not, John, but it's, kind of shows where the hike and bike trail would go on one side, it's a 10-foot hike and bike trail, and then a sidewalk on the other. And if, where you have a sidewalk, you have quite a bit of room between the road and the sidewalk, basically, so you could get a tree to maybe possibly grow in there and really create a buffer. Where the hike and bike trail's a lot larger, and so it's harder to get a big street tree in that area. There are certain clear zone requirements and safety requirements for having trees too close to the road that make lawyers nervous when you start planting them too close to the road. So it's kind of a debated topic at this point, because sometimes they are, they're right there. You drive through some cities, they're right there next to the road. It's been like that for a long time, but whether or not we can advocate putting a pin oak tree, you know, two foot off the back of curb, we're not going to say that today. But we do say we can put Bradford pears or smaller trees, trees that, I'm trying to think of red bud trees, they don't get huge, but they definitely show a buffer between, and that could go on the side between the hike and bike trail right there that John's showing and the back of curb. That's about an 11-foot area, so there's plenty of room to plant a smaller tree or shrubs or show plantings in that area. And then also that area will then be used for transit bus stops, so we could put pads and benches and things in that area to get them on to the, to, off the bus and on to a pedestrian access area, which is the hike and bike trail. John, you want to pull up the master plan? Let's see, yeah, that one right there, let's try that. Okay, this shows just a concept that has been proposed through some development in the past from Dean, basically working with Stan Byquist, for our levee trail system right there, ends at the soccer complex on the, kind of the right side of that drawing, right in that area. That trail starts north of Magnolia there and goes all the way to Bill Burke. Well, the hope is, is to continue that to the south, all the way to Schelling and eventually possibly even encircle the whole city at some point. It's not a lot of cost to just put the limestone screenings on the levee, and that is actually, we own the right-of-way, it's possible to do it, people like to walk it. So that's the future hope, is that we actually have a trail that encircles the whole city. But Dean did talk about that earlier, though, how many things to connect to it. Well, this is a proposal, as this area develops, and we already have right-of-way dedicated for probably three-quarters of that strip between Ohio and the levee, where once that develops through there, that would be a good connection to the Ohio hike and bike trail and the levee that isn't necessarily on the side of a road. And it's, in a lot of areas that you drive, and I guess Johnson County being the most familiar for me, the trails follow the rivers, they don't, they follow the roads as well, but the connections are really along the rivers and the, oh, the creeks, and it's just nicer, people enjoy walking along the rivers and creeks when you can, and if you have the capacity to have that, it's nice to have them along the roads as well, but it's nicer even off the roads, and so this would be an example of that. We actually applied for some funding for that spur south of Magnolia along the soccer field all the way to Schelling, and we did receive some funding to build a hike and bike path to, along the levee top. So that, and that is through the, it's interesting, it's, what is it, Dean, alcohol, money?
Yeah, some of the alcohol mines, it's used to, the Alliance for Healthy Communities.
Yes, it's a Healthy Communities grant through KDHE that comes back to the city because of, I guess, settlement.
Yeah, it was part of the tobacco settlement.
Tobacco settlement, and that runs through the Central Kansas Foundation, is that the corner of Ohio and Cloud, basically, is that the CKF, is that what it's called? So anyway, we're still trying to sort out exactly what that means and what it's going to look like and how it's going to get built, but supposedly we have gotten a grant from them through the state to build a little bit more of this trail. So we're going to see how far that takes us, and then we'll hopefully have a better idea how much it costs to finish the rest of it around the city. So those are just some examples. John, show the last example, connectivity, which is, yeah, right there.
You mentioned Johnson County, do they do that along the railroads down there, too?
There are no railroads around. That's the interesting thing, we do have railroads here, but there weren't any railroads. I shouldn't say Johnson County didn't have railroads, they did have a big spur that ran along I-35 through Alatha, but the areas that I was familiar with were mostly along the creeks on the eastern part, which was Leewood, Oveland Park, Shawnee. Alatha did connect some, but we didn't, we didn't get into the railroads as much, not where I was from, so that doesn't mean that it can't happen, but Dean has understood the railroad philosophy around here, and so far in Kansas, the railroads have not allowed a rails-to-trails, has not happened here. For some reason, there's state legislation or state law that doesn't allow it, it doesn't happen as easy here for some reason.
In a lot of states, the preference under the law is that the railroads have right-of-way, which means that they acquired title to it and that it can be rail-banked and preserved in its present state and converted to trails by the railroad, giving that over to some trail organization, but in Kansas, there's a very strong preference for reversion back to the abutting owners that if it ceases to be used for railroad purposes, and Kansas is somewhat unique in that regard. And I think I explained to Dan that I was at a national meeting, met the president of the Rails-to-Trails Foundation, and they said if it wasn't for the state of Kansas, they would be out of a job because the Rails-to-Trails concept is widely accepted in every state except Kansas. And it has to do with our property laws and the real strong preference for if it ceases to be used for rail purposes, it reverts back to the owner and it's not available for public use, whereas in Missouri or Iowa, places like that, you've got hundreds of miles of rail trails. So that's part of the challenge we face here.
It's a good question, but yeah, legally right now, it hasn't taken a lot of hold in Kansas, because it goes back to each individual owner along the entire railway, which is a lot of people. So at this point, we haven't looked into that at all really for our rails that we have in Salina. Lastly, though, we do have a concept proposed by BWR, Steve Snyder worked with them on a concept to connect Bill Burke Park along the downtown, basically along the downtown area all the way up through Lakewood, Lakewood School, Riverside Park, isn't that what's up there, Riverside Park, all the way over to Lakewood Park along North Street? That's kind of a long-range plan to start putting trails in through that area as well, and this is actually gaining quite a bit of traction. We've had at least two plats that I know of that have said, yeah, that's a great idea, let's make that a drainage right-of-way as well as a pedestrian access right-of-way. They're okay with that, so it's.
What would these look like? In other words, would they be the decomposed granite-type material or?
There's a lot of options to that. They could be, yeah, the gravel, it's actually, kind of limestone screenings is the cheapest, most cost-effective way to get it done.
Is that what's on the?
That's what's on the levee top.
That's great.
That works pretty well. Johnson County actually paved most of theirs, so there's asphalt. We actually have concrete in Bill Burke Park that was done through a grant, and Salina concrete works the best because we have a lot of concrete competition, asphalt's a little harder to get, we can get it, it's just sometimes not easy to get, and especially small jobs with narrow paving, it's feasibly, it's harder for our asphalt suppliers to do that here, anyway.
Those limestone screenings seem like, you know, even when it's been wet out, they're still firm, but yet it gives you some, you know, what am I trying to say? Cushion when you're running, it's pretty nice, I like it.
Yeah, there was.
Plenty of bike riders out there, too.
Yeah, BWR did an estimate for all four options, and that was by far the most cost-effective, and it would get us the most bang for our buck early on. I didn't realize how many burrs and things stick in your bike tires when you actually ride our levee. I thought, I'm just going to ride the levee, and you just can't do that real well with a bike. It's, so I was surprised at that, that we have, whether you have that stuff or not, I didn't think it really mattered, but it does matter because until you get those limestone screenings down and keep the weeds and those burrs, what are they called, thorns?
Goat heads are the worst.
Goat head thorns, they are tough on a bike, and so you can't just go ride your bike along the levee real, real very easily, if you've, if you really wanted to know that at this point. But the limestone screens would really help us, and that's the most cost-effective way we know to get that solved.
On another slide, how far down south were you taking that one that showed the soccer fields and stuff? We didn't really. We didn't really page all the way down, I was just kind of curious where that ended up, and...
We were just, we proposed just going to Schelling at that time.
Oh, okay, just to Schelling Road and kind of just re-wrapping back around? Okay.
Yeah, there's a proposal to develop some of that area eventually as well, through Dane Allsup, possibly to, you know, someday develop that area. So Schelling, you know, we may be able to connect along Schelling there someday, but right now, it's just getting into Schelling at this point.
And you're saying, maybe on the other right, maybe it looks like it's heading down towards Waterwell or something, is the city?
Ultimately, to Waterwell, and then around the south edge of town, we have a levee along the south, along Minter, the Minter area, so it just keeps going.
Okay.
So it's quite a concept. Steve Snyder, we're going to talk tomorrow night at the Parks and Rec Board about going north, right off of Iron Street, over to Lakewood Park as another grant opportunity from KDOT. KDOT has funds available every so often to fund that, so we're looking more at the north, priority three, yeah, right through there, exactly, John. Thank you. Anyway, that's just, so that's connectivity with bike paths, anyway.
Is it legal to ride bikes on sidewalks?
I don't know.
Yeah, by ordinance, it is, except in the downtown area.
Okay, except in downtown area.
Yeah.
Wow, we've got miles of bike trails.
Not real compatible, but it actually is legal.
Okay.
Now, kind of where the rubber meets the bike trail here, if we adopt this comprehensive plan, then any, and let's say a new plan came before us for a subdivision out in one of these areas that's on this thing, then we would need to make allowances for that.
Yeah, I think particularly where, you know, we particularly talked about the east side of town, where, which is almost off this screen, but I think this is Holmes Road. But over here, you've got East Dry Creek, which is a channel. We had conversations on, with Darvin Dent, on this property right here at Crawford and Holmes. You've got a stream running here. If the concept is you should have a linear park or trail system along that stream, then as property develops, areas along the stream or floodplain areas, you should designate that as trail easement areas to allow for that, and then do it systematically, so as you look at different pieces of property, you're building a system.
Connecting them all.
Right, and it's, unless you have a plan to refer back to, it's hard to address that on a, when you're reviewing a subdivision.
The comp plan would, we'd try to get an actual drawing from the comp plan. I think there's one in there that shows kind of these connectivity areas and these trail areas, so it'd be, when you get a development in that area, then we would propose to make sure there's land dedicated for a trail, or to have them build a trail for that. And they don't connect for a long time. Johnson County is an interesting example of, they are now, they're all connecting, and boy, everybody loves those things like you wouldn't believe. It's a good example of little pieces here, pieces there, and they start adding up after a while, but it takes a long time sometimes.
The concept here, then, the pedestrian system, I guess, an example would be where, you know, sometimes we just accept it and don't really press the issue, but one example of lack of connectivity would be, and there was a certain antagonism between the two corporations, but out south, you have Sam's Club and you have Target, and they are side by side. But to get from Sam's Club to Target, you have to go out to the public street, get out on the street, and get back on and back into the Target parking lot, or vice versa, instead of having even a sidewalk connectivity between the two stores. But the, at the time, is, well, we don't have anything to do with them, they can do their thing, and we can do ours, and neither staff nor the commissions that review those really force the issue. But that would be an example of bad connectivity, if you're forced to go out into the street when, in fact, you should be able to have either a sidewalk or even vehicle connection between the two. That would be example of poor connectivity. But part of that is looking at, as you look at developments or subdivisions of taking all of those elements. I do think we've done a good job recently of looking at sidewalks and the importance of sidewalks, but there are other aspects to that as well. I think, John, the next one is Bicycle Concept Plan, and this is just some concepts for, it identifies some shared road possibilities, lightly-traveled streets. I, in my office, had a map of the 1980s bike route system for Salina, and we dusted that back off, and there's no reason why, you know, you couldn't go back to that, looking at streets like Highland, or Roach, or streets that don't carry great amounts of traffic, but do connect places about making those shared road or bike lane-type situations. This is East Dry Creek, identified the old, the rail corridors as possibilities, but that is a concept that we'll keep pulling out and referring to as we look at different areas in the city. Yes, if you go to the next one, John. So Dan showed you the complete street cross-section, which means that when you look at streets and designs of streets, whether it's Ninth Street, or Crawford, or less major streets, that in addition to travel lanes and turn lanes, that you look at sidewalks, bike paths, transit stops. It's a different way of thinking and looking at that, and as I said, Dan's concept there for a complete street on Holmes Road, an impact street, just means that you give greater emphasis to, and I think Dan has been doing an experiment, they've been working on Broadway Boulevard, out by Cloud and in that area, about taking out the asphalt medians and trying to go back with grass. It's a little challenging with the trees, because you've got to cut holes in the asphalt, but those are the kind of things of making the streets more visually attractive. That's what we mean by impact streets, and then the concept of gateways, which is key entryways into the community. So, yes, go to the next one, John. So as Dan mentioned, when he showed you the Holmes Road, you've got auto lanes, sidewalks, multi-use trails, and transit stops. Impact streets, you're looking at streetscaping, like what they're doing on Broadway by replacing asphalt with green space, looking at crosswalks, opportunities for public art, improving pedestrian safety. And then we have a South Ninth corridor overlay, we have a North Ohio corridor overlay, but that's where the planning commission gets involved, is, you know, looking at specific gateways to the community and how those should develop. John, the major street plan, which just is trying to identify the classification of streets. The next one, John, is, and I think this needs some fine tuning. We've had discussions about whether State Street is a gateway, or whether it ought to be. It probably is, whether we want it to be or not.
Wait a second.
Discussion about, is this...
Nicest area of town!
Is this the gateway here, or is it up here? Some things of that nature, so I think this map may be tweaked. And then here, it's a pretty heavy-duty implementation list, and this is where staff and planning commission and others get involved. This is what Dan's worked on with Holmes Road. Look at, if you have something that says, we want South Ninth to be an impact street, what does that mean? Complete street concept, overall street network connectivity, I think we've done a good job with that on subdivisions, but not have subdivisions not connect with each other. Working with the commissions to prioritize locations for gateway enhancements, and then, again, having standards for private development in those gateways. When do we require a development to look at not just traffic counts, but pedestrian, bicycle, and bus access? And this is what Patrick was speaking to, that as you look at subdivisions, having some clear standards for connectivity relating to bicycle and pedestrian routes. And I think there's one other page of that. I think this is a goal that's more staff-driven, identifying those areas. Looking at, I think, an example I gave at a steady session was Sam's Club in the residential area to the north. You might not want traffic connections there, but you might want to have a sidewalk or bicycle connection from the residential areas to Sam's Club, and not just seal it off. One thing we can do, you have the authority to do now, is you review site plans that aren't subdivisions, but are site plans, that you can look at, at the need for sidewalks. One thing we don't do, that some cities do, is require places be provided for bicycles to park. Build a new restaurant or store, and where's the bike parking? And then looking at making sure that our bus stops and transit places have connections to get to it, and then explore Rails to Trails. Engineering and planning staffs are continuing to work on that. But I think of all the sections I've seen, as far as implementation or things to implement that we're not doing today, I think connectivity maybe has the longest list. So I think that gives you pretty, we didn't want to have a situation where you didn't have an opportunity to know what a complete street was, or impact street, or what was meant by some of those concepts, so we'll continue to hit you with those. At each, we're going to talk about future land use at the next two meetings, because that's, we'll have the land use map and get it out in detail. And we have bike and, oh, for our next meeting, we have a redesign of the entrance to the Walmart store, moving that back to center location, and how that relates to their site, and a plan for adding condominiums to the Marymount Administration Building on East Iron. So have those two items there, and originally, we had two items scheduled for the 17th. I'm now up to five, and I might be seven when I get back to my office, so we will be, we will be meeting both times in November. And I think the idea is to try to get some finalization and comfort zone with the comprehensive plan in December, where there can be some public hearings and get feedback.
What, do you envision those happening here, or out in different sites?
I think primarily here, but I think on future land use, even on the discussion basis, what we've done is, I've tried to schedule those out, and we put them on the website, and they're sending those to people, so if there are landowners or whoever who are interested in the future land use plan, they can come to a planning commission meeting and just ask questions, just as you would.
Did you say on the 17th, we have seven items?
Oh, we could possibly have...
Comprehensive, could you cater that one?
We could possibly do that, Alyssa. You want to take a note of that?
I'm budgeted to China.
Use some of that KDOT money.
I thought maybe you'd fix something, but...
The health department wouldn't know.
That's true.
The bread baskets across the street, I don't know if they deliver...
We'll just meet over there.
All right, so we could move over there. But pizza would be easy if we can time the delivery, so. And you don't, you don't get, you don't get anything on your paperwork, but some of the, and it is an interesting concept, and Mr. Kennedy's not here, but the idea was, their Verizon Wireless has some coverage issues, more about volume than otherwise. You may have read, they had some discussions with the school board, and the concept, which would be coming on the 17th, would be to take light standards at Salina Stadium, replace them with a cell tower, and it would still look like a light pole, but it would serve the dual function of being a cell tower and light standard at the same time, and...
And pay the school?
And...
And pay the school for leasing?
And pay the school for leasing.
Right on.
So it could be a win-win-win situation, but that's one of the items on the 17th, which, not real complicated, but it is a tower, and it would be reviewed by you, so.
Yeah.
And the other, they're also looking at doing that at South High, and doing that as part of the lighting of the South High field as well.
Great.
So that's one of the items that we have.
Very good.
Thank you for your patience this evening, and working through the community theater with us.
That's a good place. Sidney.
We need some more plans.